Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the City Commission Meeting, Special Committee in February twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five at five P M. I'm calling this meeting to order with an invitation by from Commissioner Campbell and Pledge of Allegiance, Commissioner Borum.
Do me a prayer. Dear Heavenly Father God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your grace, God. We thank you for your mercies. We ask as we go forth with this meeting, God, that you give us the wisdom, the knowledge and understanding to make the best decisions for our community to help it move for forward. We ask these prayers and all other prayers in your name. We pray. Amen.
Amen.
After me, I pledge allegiance to the Bible of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God. And give us hope whatever change has to come.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Carrera.
Present.
Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Jones.
Present.
Commissioner Borum.
Present.
Thank you. We have quorum. I'm going to open the floor up to public comments. Is there anybody here for public comments? Seeing none of those public comments. We're going to on to regular business. Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Davis.
I'd like to make a motion that we add an emergency item to regarding the city manager hiring.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Motion of second in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. And if there's a second emergency.
I'd like to make an emergency item that we appoint Mr. Avery Hunter to the pension board effective immediately.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? That, any names? Thank you.
If we could potentially move that particular emergency agenda item, I know this is out of order. You usually hear them last. If we can move that to the front so Mr. Hunter can go home.
Okay.
Since this is an emergency item, I make a motion that we accept the nomination or appointment.
A second.
Hey, and Mr. Hunter, would you like to?
Do you want to come up, Mr. Hunter? We have a vote. Do we need to vote? Don't we need to vote? We have a vote. Do we need to vote to approve this motion?
We have to.
Emergency.
We have to swear him in for this appointment, so.
Yes, go ahead.
Avery, repeat after me. I, Avery Hunter. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support, protect and defend the Constitution of government of the United States in the state of Florida in the Charter of Ordinances of the city Palaca that I am duly qualified to hold office under requirements of the Constitution of the state. And that I will well and faithfully well and peacefully perform the duties of general employees pension board member on which I am about to enter. So help me God.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Yeah, we're ready. I was just letting you finish. No, it's, it's fine. Yeah, it's fine. Just it's, it's, it's done.
On to regular business. I N B objectives and goals for the city manager performance appraisal, or should we be discussing the city manager position first?
If you're going to change the agenda, you just need to make a motion to move the agenda items.
To the city manager report for consideration as our first item.
We have a motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. Okay, has everybody had an opportunity to read the response received from Mr. Jones today?
I have.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis, thoughts?
Well, first of all, there was a deadline of five P M. Friday, which was not adhered to. Secondly, based on the request to for twenty weeks of severance, that is a non-negotiable for me based on the history of our city managers, especially most recently. And I'd like to see us move forward with that contingency, which I'll hold until later, until we get additional responses from the commissioners regarding the letter. So I am not a proponent of accepting the the counter offer.
Okay, Commissioner Borum, your thoughts?
Well, my thoughts are, I mean, basically what he, what he wrote up in there in, in his response was that he, I guess he had to deal with his counsel as well. So I'm not sure, given the timeframe that he had to, to respond, he did respond by today, which my request was to have, have it backed by sometimes, sometime today. And so it would have met that timeframe, even though Friday was the deadline. You, you didn't have many hours to actually respond. And I think his request was to ask for, I mean, whatever the industry requires as well relates to the severance piece. I don't know if, if whatever the industry requires. I mean, we don't, we don't want to do anything different than whatever the ICMA industry requires. And so I was amenable to that piece as well with, with, with the twenty weeks or what have you. So but whatever the commission decides, I'll be willing to help in, in that regard and move forward if that's what the commission wants.
Commissioner Jones.
Basically, just reading this, I just received it. It's in here and I kind of concur with Commissioner Borum. They're going to close the business on Friday and today. We are going to get it today and make a decision today. I would like to be clear going forth, no matter who we select on what the industry standards are. Because when you're making a decision, it should be a decision with the most information possible given to us. And we're making a decision about severance packages, the industry standard, the pay scale. And because people that we considered for the positions have asked for numbers that seem big, maybe they are the industry standard. And are we going to go along with that? And take that into consideration? Or are we going to draw our line in the sand? And say, okay, maybe we need to set the cap to what it truly is so that it won't come back on the commission as if we're not really working either working within those parameters, or we're just offering way too, we're, we're putting, we're setting about way too high because if I was applying for a job, I would actually ask for the top tier. My other point I want to make, and again, I'm like Commissioner Borum, it's whatever happened out of this meeting, I want to, I really want to do what's right and do the right thing. I feel those documents should need to be in front of us. Before we actually had a pay scale that Attorney West presented, I have emailed him. And it actually had all of the city manager's salary throughout the state of Florida. And that would have been instrumental in deciding where we wanted to be, whether it's our second pick, this first pick, whatever going forward. I think we need to utilize those tools that, that we had. This go around wasn't available. I hadn't seen it. I don't think the entire commission, I had it, but I don't think entire commission was actually privy to such or they util, or we utilize it. I know it didn't come up on the board when I tried to email it. So in the absence of those things, I don't actually have a recommendation other than what I want to know where we're going to go from here. You're asking me about it. Those are two things that I would like to have in front of me before I make a solid decision because rather it's again, this candidate or another candidate, I would like to be consistent and give whoever we bring in what they deserve in that particular position. So, and, and I had a call coming into this meeting today from constituent asking those questions. Did we consider the city manager average salary for a city this size? And I had to be transparent and say we did not have a standard that we actually went by. It almost went like we went from our our salary ways that we, excuse me, advertised that was very big, one hundred twenty-two thousand and popped in a hundred ninety plus. So so to answer your question, what you asked, I'm, it's open for discussion. I just hope we, you start with some dialogue and discussion.
Commissioner Campbell?
I want us to be completely, for lack of better words, I want us to have the same energy we had the other day today. We spoke with regards to a timeframe. If the timeframe that was provided was something that we did not want to adhere by, it should have been changed at that time. I get it. Things happen, but regardless, a response is better than no response. And in a professional setting with the experience stated by Mr. Jones, that should have been something that was at the forefront of this conversation. Allow me the opportunity to get back with you all versus not responding at all by the given timeframe. It appears that people tend to do what they want to do, and we began to be flexible. However, are we going to be flexible if those individuals sit in the seats and they don't meet our standards or our qualifications or our deadlines? Sometimes things, when they say, when you meet a person and they show you who you are, who they are, believe them. And I'm not for trends and I'm not for changing midstream, as we also have heard that several times before throughout this process. So the response I'm grateful for, I stand firm. There was a deadline that was not met with regards to this industry standards. It's only a guideline to go by. It is not a real concrete memorandum that we have to adhere to. I mean, industry standards also cover cities that have hundreds of thousands of people in them, whereas we don't. So again, as we proceed forth, again, we, we all are entitled to our thought process, but when deadlines are not met, those are red flags to me. Regardless of how minor or how big, it's a red flag to me.
Thank you. I, I, could I please give my input? Thank you. I, I concur with Commissioner Davis and Commissioner Campbell. I think as a professional responding in a timely fashion is paramount. It gives me some concern and pause if somebody can't do that. Also, we did say ten week severance standards, as was said, are guidelines, they're not carved in stone. And there's also a request or on this counter to remove the loss of severance protections during the probationary period, which I strongly disagree with. So at this point, I am not in favor of this second counter. And again, that's my thoughts, Commissioner Borum.
Again, I want to reiterate what I said. I said, whatever the will of the commission was, I just stated the point that I made initially as related to my request instead of cutting it off on Friday, which I said, let's, let's bring, see if we could, he could respond by Monday based on the timeframe. I'm not trying to change anything midstream. That's, I just made a request last week. But when we talk about city manager salary, we also got to consider people who work under the city manager. They're not going to come in most of the time underneath what the, the next highest person paid. And again, nobody ever say, says anything about other, other salaries within the city. So why, why are you pounding on the city manager position so hard? When that is the top position for somebody who is truly qualified for the position. Again, and based on Mr. Jones's response back, he's not begging to come work here. He have other options. I'm just, I'm just, if you look at his write-up, he's not begging to knock the door down to get anywhere. He, he, he have other offers. So he was just willing to be able to assist and help the city with his experience that he have as a, a seasoned city manager. That's my comment.
Go ahead.
The experience that he has as a city manager, he has municipal, he has municipality, municipal experience, but his management as an actual city manager has been in recent years. It's not twenty-five years of city manager experience. So as we talk about experience, let's take in consideration the role of what we're talking about. He has city manager experience, but it's been more recent years. He has municipal experience, but not in the area of city management.
I, I, yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Davis.
I just want to clarify a couple of things. ICMA has recommendations for severance. So there's a standard, and again, it's a general recommendation. But there are so many things that impact amount of severance that's reasonable for the city of Palaca and other cities because all cities are not the same. In addition to mentioning the amount of the severance, this counter offer, the second counter also mentioned concern about the probationary period without what he considers a reasonable severance to prevent him from being fired or let go based on political reasons. So again, I do want to say this, we have to look at our city. We have to look at what we can offer. The, what we're offering is not out of line with guidelines based on the makeup of our city and what we have, in my opinion. So I did want to say that. And I do have a question. What is the salary of the next highest paid person in the city?
Ms. Jones? Yes, I know. Okay, that, that was great.
Yes, we need to get that.
That was great.
And I'm also having that spreadsheet printed up for you, Commissioner Jones. And just really quickly, Florida statutes, two-one-five-point-four-two-five limits, it puts the cap on severance in the state of Florida to twenty weeks. So that is the absolute maximum.
Maximum. Also note that, and again, Commissioner Davis wouldn't receive this because she wasn't in office yet. But Ms. West did send the Florida city manager's salary information in an email on October twenty-ninth. So we did receive that at that time. I just pulled it up.
Right. As I said, I had it, but I want to make sure everyone had the same.
Obviously.
Right.
Ms. Davis.
So, I think that's important.
Well, I agree.
Because when we, again, and it's the constituents that are saying that the salary is outrageous, but when they don't know the full facts of what we're talking about now, the, the next highest person, their salary, how promotions and things occurs for is the percentage that others receive, that's going to affect whoever we bring in. So with that being the case, I think when we talk about full transparency, let it be known so that they're not saying that we're having favoritism towards somebody that we think considering bringing in, or we're being extra harsh on someone. So, but the parameters that in which we work in, I would like for the public to know and to know the reasons why. I mean.
I just.
Commissioner, go ahead, Commissioner Campbell.
I feel like we're constantly backpedaling. And I feel that as we sit on this dais, a lot of times we want everything to be hand-fed to us. We have to go out and do our own research. We have to go out and do our home, own, uh, homework. And we get in here and we have these meetings and we want the explanation, the explanations. This is information that has been provided to us previous. We've had several conversations with regards to the salary that we wanted or the salary, regardless of what was printed on the job description. We've had extensive conversation. And now to bring it back up, we gave our minimum and we gave our max. It's what, if we, if, if we're going to accept it, let's accept it. If we, we stood last meeting firm on the non-negotiables, which was for the vast majority of us, the, the ten week severance. So I'm not understanding why we're having that conversation with regards to other stuff outside of the salary. I think that we need to go ahead and make a decision if we're going to accept or we're going to deny. And let's move this city forward in a manner that will benefit not only staff here at City Hall, but our citizens, City Hall and city staff, but our citizens. We don't have time to continue to belabor. We didn't go back and forth when we were trying to negotiate a interim. So why should we go back and forth when we're trying to negotiate our city manager? And when we sat here in multiple meetings, had several conversations with regards to high, low, again, I'm not here to spend all night when we can just simply make a decision to moving forward. I know it's a critical condition, but all questions at this point tonight, our main focus should have been coming in here, setting guidelines or evaluations for a city manager, understanding that an emergency item come, can, has come up with regards to a candidate. Like you say, he's not beating down the door to come here. And we're not going to continuously open our door back and forth for negotiations when we sat in two separate meetings and gave our highs, our lows and our non-negotiables.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have?
Madam Mayor, I would like to make a motion. I want to make sure that all comments are clear before. Is it appropriate?
Yes.
I move that we do not accept the second counter offer and from and withdraw the offer to Mr. Redmond Jones.
Our second.
We have a motion of second, all in favor? Aye. Opposition? Do we have?
Roll call, please.
Roll call, please.
Yay.
Commissioner Jones?
Yay.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yay.
Commissioner Davis? Yay. Mayor Carrera? Yes, yay. Thank you. Mayor? Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Davis.
May I, I would like to offer an open discussion regarding our point, our way forward. My recommendation is that we offer the city manager position to our interim city manager with a base salary of one hundred and seventy thousand dollars. With the contract terms in the original contract, no relocation obviously is applicable. And I'd also recommend some language for Ms. Cardy to obtain the credentials from ICMA for cert, for I guess certified city managers within one year or some appropriate timeline and agree, you know, that we can agree on. So I do want to offer that for discussion. I'd also like to provide my rationale. We did follow the process that was laid out. It did not result in obtaining a city manager. Ms. Cardy did interview for the position. And she was in the top four according to our rankings. And I had conversation with some city staff, just in general, since I've been commissioner. And one thing I think Ms. Cardy can offer is that she knows our city. She's been doing the position along with her finance director position. I do believe, given the opportunity to just do one role, that she could probably make an even better impact. And the city needs to move forward. The other thing finally. The other thing finally that I want to say that Ms. Cardy does offer is some semblance of um, we, we know her. People know her. She knows the city. And we are on a tra- traject- trajectory from my observation, opinion of going towards stability, especially when the last city manager was let go. So there are some bleeding that has stopped. And um, I think overall, our constituents are favorable. And I think with the proper support, with clear guidelines, expectations, with our defined goals and our defined um, evaluation process in place, I think it could be a way for the city to move forward. Thank you.
Yes.
Go ahead, Commissioner Campbell.
If that was a motion, I second it.
I do too. As far as discussion, I also think part of this would be obviously that her um, vacant position be filled as soon as possible, as feasible, and that there is also a succession plan. Go ahead, we're just discussion point there.
Okay, so I just looked up on um, ICMA and the qualifications to get your certification is three years. Three to four years depending on the action you take. So she has three to four years and not just a year. Just, I'm just letting you know that that's the qualifications.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Do you want to?
Uh, so moved. What I said.
Discussion.
I was actually seconding in hopes of going into discussion, so.
Yes, we have a motion as second and then we have discussion. Commissioner Jones?
So, just the, just for understanding process as we continue, I think. Uh, you know, I could appreciate Mrs. Davis' assessment that she's been here a little over thirty days. And um. I, I said.
Okay, okay, go on, please.
Um, and um, as we go into this again, uh, selection process. And in the effort to have good worker relationship between Commissioner and manager, um, I want to make sure, sure that I support and we have a consensus on this dais. With that being said, I asked for some information. And you guys brought this uh, this motion for, without having information from um, HR that I requested. And it wasn't just asked arbitrarily, just to be asking questions, Campbell. It was asked, Commissioner Campbell, it was asked so that even with Ms. Cardy or whoever going forth, you know, we throw a number out. Let's, let's kind of be consistent. Um. As far as, as far as, I want to know, we talked about the we talked about the, what we're looking for in the city manager. We asked that question. Actually, a candidate asked you, Mayor, what are we looking for in a, in a, in a city manager? And what would they be tasked with? And you said, the answer was given is basically public safety. We really didn't give that direction. And I guess that when we say we got familiarity with Ms. Cardy, those are things that she already knows. At this point, again, my question is, the salary, are we gonna, are we being fair to her? Is this something that she's okay with that salary? Obviously, there may have been already. We probably already know that, so in a way, I guess the majority would know.
No, that offer would have to be extended. That has not happened yet.
Okay, so, um, are we gonna also, before we make this decision, are we gonna have a assistant city manager position? Is that something that we're gonna also fill, are we gonna fill that position any time soon?
Well, first of all, that is the, okay, finish up.
Okay, I mean, I just, this is the point where I'm asking because if we got, we were hiring a, at this point, an inexperienced city manager, would that be needed? Would, I know we say we're gonna hire a.
Mayor, uh, I, I do want to interrupt because it's a point of order. There's a motion on the, there's a motion on the floor.
Discussion, and it's irrelevant. It's relevant.
Need to stop one at a time.
You have a habit of doing that. So this is relevant to my decision-making. It's going to a vote. And so at this point, you can get a point of order afterwards. Um, are we gonna do that? Because that's taking into consideration when we're talking about the pay and how much we're gonna pay. I think that should go into the consideration of what, how my vote will go. Again, I'm trying to, I'm trying to make a decision.
I understand, but other people.
And base it upon, I just told you that people called and asked about the salary. So if.
Please stop.
My point of order.
Commissioner Campbell was next. Please stop.
Order, which supersedes. My point of order was related to introducing new information that was not in my motion about an assistant city manager. That was my only point of order.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
I think, first of all, we will not downgrade anyone by the timeframe of which they have been elected. And we can't water down them.
Point of order, why are we talking about that? Why are we talking about that?
No, 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 no. No, 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 because.
Then I said, water, water. You, you don't know.
Water, stop.
We're, I'm talking about the respect factor.
You don't, you.
Correct me on that. I didn't correct you.
Okay.
You're going back to a correction. I think we.
But we can't get it.
I, I want us to focus on the matter at hand, which is a city manager, regardless of the timeframe, anyone has been elected to this council. That's the point that I was making and I'm still talking. What we are here today, we've made a decision not to hire our candidate, which was Mr. Jones. For consideration, there was a motion made for consideration that went to a second so that we can have the proper discussion. Whether you're for it or whether you're not for it, it all goes back to the respect factor of what we need to have as we move this forward. So I say this simply because, for consideration, when I was actually supposed to speak before you, we gave, I asked specifically, when we were doing the interview process, were we going to give consideration to an inside candidate in which we normally do? You, in any organization, you always give consideration to a candidate that applies from within.
Do it, what we're talking about.
I'm making a point.
Is that in the motion?
The motion is not for discussion.
On a voter, just like commission, that means you need to talk about what we were just discussing.
Discussion, I'm not gonna vote because we're not going down this road of arguing.
I'm getting to a point that Ms. Cardy is not a new conversation when it comes down to the candid- candidacy of city manager. Regardless of feelings, regardless of anything, there was even a motion that was made during the interview process that involved Ms. Cardy that was died because of what could have, the conversation that I had earlier. So again, we have something before us for consideration, which is clear. But the amount and all of those things, those can be up for discussion. She's operating as our interim city manager right now. We know that we want to have someone in place by February, I mean, by March first. We understood the timeframe, but then again, if there is new information that the commissioner is willing or wanting us to have in, to take in consideration, we can still move on as we, as we are and then have this conversation. That's the, that's what I was trying to make.
So we have a motion as second. Roll call, Madam Clerk, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yay.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yay.
Mr. Jones? Commissioner Jones?
Now you're on Jones. How you, how you gonna skip?
What's the motion? Can you restate the motion?
Ms. Cardy to um, manager with certification within.
That wasn't, that wasn't a motion.
Good, we'll let Ms., we'll let Commissioner Davis reiterate the motion, please.
I restated, is to offer Mrs. Ms. Cardy the position of city manager with a base salary of one hundred seventy thousand dollars with the contract terms in the original contract that went to Mr. Jones, excluding relocation because it's not applicable, and adding verbiage for ICMA certification within one year of starting, I'm sorry, within the prescribed time um, per ICMA guidelines. And to backfill, if accepted, the finance director role.
So what the, that's two motions, isn't it?
No.
The backfill, a different position?
Come, Ms. West, is that, can that be considered part of the entire motion, please?
You could break this down into smaller bits. Um. Sure.
Go ahead, Commissioner Davis.
I move that we, I don't write the right term, but separate the motion. Yeah, it, it just, we state a motion that is, is easy to understand. It doesn't tie.
The motion on the table is already there. Being that Ms. Cardy is stepping into, oh, consideration of stepping into a full-time position, the vacancy will be available. So we just knocked it out in one particular motion. It doesn't have to be two motions. We make stuff so much difficult than what it needs to be. Thank you, Ms., that's why I second it, so we can move forward. Thank you, Commissioner Davis.
Again.
How about yeas to?
Yay.
Yay.
Yes, Commissioner Davis.
I, I want to make clear, when I'm calling for a point of order, it is not to make anyone stop talking, generally speaking. With the motion was not relevant to the assistant city manager discussion. That, that's the only point I was trying to make, that we could not introduce new information that was not relevant to that motion, but it was not to stop a commissioner from talking. So I do want to be clear about when I'm saying point of order, what I'm saying, and I didn't get to explain it, so.
Thank you.
Apologies if needed, uh, Commissioner.
No apology, no apologies. Okay, ma'am, ma'am.
Go ahead, Commissioner Jones.
On this, again, it's, we're still in a discussion, that vote is, has been completed. I asked for information that still have not been presented back to the dais that Ms. Jones went so kind of to get, and I still would like for it to be answered. Um, and again, when we're making these decisions, uh, whether a commissioner want to say that the information was given to us prior to, and we should do our own research. Research is already done. However, when we up here, it's not an audience of people that actually are partaking in our decision-making. All we're gonna do is see it in the headlines. I like to make it clear that the reason for our choices is A, B, or C. And if we spell it out, there's no room for misinterpretation. Okay, so it's done for a reason, and as much as you, uh, some commissioners don't like to be held down to time restraints or be here a long period of time, I think it's imperative that we put the information out to the public so that we don't have to fill these calls and emails later for what we did and why we did them. So, a good point came out that the city attorney is the second highest paid person right now. And so we would have to give the city manager a substantial amount more, okay? Uh, within six months, I think, there's an original contract that is gonna be an evaluation. Uh, no, that's, tho- those things, I'm just, with the counter, so. Yeah, so it's not?
It's not in the original, no. That was, uh, again, the first, a response to the first counter made by Mr. Jones.
So it is not a six-month, is it a six-month probationary period?
Yes, there is.
No evaluation?
No, an evaluation, but not necessarily stepped. Salary stepped. Go ahead, Commissioner Jones. I mean, Ms. Jones, I'm sorry.
Um, so the first contract was the offer of one hundred and seventy, I mean, one, one sixty-two. That was the offer. So the counter, um, the amount that we were given authorization to, if the counter came back, was in that range of one seventy. Doing that first offer, which is what the um, motion that Commissioner Davis made is to offer based on that original offer, um, the original contract. And that excludes the six months and the twelve-month um, steps in pay. So that wasn't in the original, so that's excluded. We're simply using the first original contract that was submitted with the base salary. The first that we submitted to Mr. Jones was one sixty-two. Commissioner Davis was the one seventy. To your point of what you asked me to go get, that salary is one sixty-two, seven eighty.
So the city attorney is at one sixty-two, seventy?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, great. So, let's go back. So severance in all itself remains at the.
Ten weeks at what we originally proposed in the first contract, yes. Go ahead, Ms. West.
The only thing I'm going to add is, uh, according to Gov. salaries, the average city attorney salary in Florida is two hundred and thirty thousand, which does exceed the average salary for city managers in the state of Florida, with the highest city attorney coming from Boca Raton at five hundred and nine thousand a year.
But we, but what, what we, I guess what the community is more focused on, they're more, more focused on the city manager. And that's where we were getting the backlash on, but no other position, irregardless of the pay, there was no uh, concern regardless of, of, of those other salaries. And, and, and that's a problem. And I think where we actually tripped that at, when we were just a little over a year ago, about going on a year and something, when the interim was, or the interim assistant city manager was in, in place, the, the, the number was one thirty-six for our, our, our salary coming in for that position. And so, but then, at the end of the day, it turned out to be one fifty-three. Uh, and when, I, I didn't have any additional knowledge until we learned about when we went out for the, uh, the, the, the new um, city manager who came in, Troy Bell, at one sixty-two. And so we got a lot of backlash from that salary. Um, but there's no backlash when it comes down to other salaries within the city. And we, we're, we're responsible for the city manager position. And so we get, we get hit pretty hard on that, but then we have salary creep in, in, you know, with other positions, and there's no, there's no, no comment.
Okay, I think this, we have concluded this conversation. We need to move to the next agenda item at this point. We're on to objectives and goals for the city manager performance.
I don't think we're completely done.
Go ahead.
So are we given a timeframe?
Over response, yes.
And if so, what is the pleasure of the commission?
Um, I think we should try to keep it basically the same as we did for Mr. Jones, which was, what, forty-eight hours?
You said, well, response to?
Yes. Was that what we, when you calculate, was it forty-eight hours roughly from Mr. Jones?
Wednesday night to Friday night.
Yep. So I think we have to do a similar timeframe.
So Wednesday night?
Yep. Any other issues to conclude or to bring up with this process, or any other concerns, additions?
If in fact that we have to go through this again, I like the entire process written out from point A to Z. Um, in the event, I hope we don't, I hope Ms. Cardy worked out with this. And I'm going into this with a positive attitude and outlook. I don't want the discussion that we had, because I think it had to be. The discussion that we had, because I think it had to be had up here, uh, to reflect. The unwillingness to go forth with the individual, it's not the individual, it is nothing to reflect on Ms. Cardy's decision. And I wanted to go into this uh, with clarity, because I support Ms. Cardy, she has been doing a good job. But I just think that our processes, we really need to be able to spill it out, and um, a lot of times staff make the decisions, and staff have the. Ability to uh, make contact with these individuals, but the backlash don't really go to staff, it comes back to the commission. And a lot of times it look like the commission is making a misstep, and I'm not pointing fingers, but. I did want this to be out in the open, my, the points that we're making right now, so that the community is aware.
Commissioner Borm.
Oh, I'm just ready, can I not do this?
Well, it's, it is distracting, to be honest with you, but, yeah, but go ahead, Commissioner Borm, go ahead, please.
No, I just want him to finish, I mean.
He's finished, I think he's finished.
I'm not rushed, but you gotta settle down with it, ma'am.
No, I don't, um, go ahead, Commissioner Borm.
You, you know, and I, and I think in terms of uh, the, the process or what have you, we, we, we've always had professional services. Or um, recruiting agencies that did that, uh, it, it is a lot for staff to have to try and, and um, put things together um. On their own, and then hiring their uh, superior, I mean, they're hiring their manager, and so i- it's, it's always a good clean process. To use a, a search firm like we have done in the past, and uh, we. We've been successful at it a number of times, we had one hiccup or snafu, but that doesn't define. Going forward, if that process is needed again and again, it's, it's been clean, but um, with the exception of one.
Thank you, is there anything further on the discussion of this item? Can we move on to the gen, next agenda item, objectives and goals for the city manager performance appraisal, um. Ms. Jones and company gave us several examples, samples, um. Have we all had an opportunity to review them, and how would we like to proceed? Go ahead, Commissioner Davis.
Yes, so, yes, they were reviewed, I will say that I did look at them, and I submitted. My recommendation for goals to be considered and added to the rest of the commission. Um, and I believe it's the document that says, here's a draft of performance goals and evaluation criteria, this is, this was my recommendation. What's not included in here is the performance tool. Which there is one that I think we have a good example of, so that, that's really all I want to say, um, it has, there are seven. Categories that I believe cover much of what was in the draft that we were looking at from the previous work. Uh, the work from the previous commission, um, but I, my thought is that these goals are very clear. Um, and it provides leeway for the manager to use, um. Her management style and strengths and skill set to carry them out. One of the things I was concerned about is with the other goals, they were telling someone how to, I, I felt they were telling someone how to do the work. But we really want to do it, I also want to talk about one caveat to this. We, we have to have something for the incoming city manager. So these goals are really general for any city manager in a city, right, things that need to be accomplished. I'm saying this because ideally, and I, I hope that we will be in a position in a year. To align these goals with the city's strategic plan, which we don't have right now, so I do want to say that. But these are very general goals that um, probably encompass a lot of what we provide, were provided as examples, so. This is my input in writing, so I will listen and see what the other commissioners have, and we can. See where we land, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Borm.
Well, I'm, I'm just in alignment with, with what we've already um, constructed in the past, but mainly. Uh, just making sure that we stay with the uh, comprehensive plan for, for this city, if anybody um, is, is still aware of the, the, the comprehensive plan that we have. Our um, strategic initiatives, uh, our um, strategic plan that we currently have, we want to stay with these things, our capital improvement projects. We want to make sure that we have all of those things in play, and also the um, the, the new um. Projects that we currently have in terms of the new CRA district and everything else, all these different things need to be before, so we can continue to move the city uh, forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones.
I'm fine with what we're presenting.
Commissioner Campbell?
I'm fine with what we have with the additions that were added by, or suggested by uh, Commissioner Davis. I also like the simplicity of the layout of the um.
The ICMA one, or?
ICMA, and then I'd also like the simplicity of the one that was provided from the city of Oviedo, um, Oviedo. It gives us the opportunity to, if it needs improvement, identifying the areas of the improvement, if it meets the expectation, of course. There is nothing really to hover on, um. But I want to take this a step further, um, and this is something that is done, um. As we proceed with the uh, evaluation of the city manager, and legal, let me know if this is something for consideration. That we allow the city manager to evaluate themselves.
Mm-hmm.
And then present to us their evaluation, and we provide them with our evaluation of them, this is currently how I've, um, how I'm. Evaluated, and it makes you really step up to the plate to see if you really are accept or. Needs improvement, meeting the expectations, or you are going overboard, not overboard in a negative way, but you're exceeding the expectation, so that would be one recommendation. Um, that I, that we allow the city manager to evaluate themselves and present back to the commission as a whole.
I, I agree, I was gonna suggest that, and also perhaps that we, again, going forward, once we get to the probationary period. Allow the city manager maybe to provide a goal that they want a lot of work, like to work on, that we can all agree upon. Um, to moving forward if they have some ideas too. Go ahead.
What a clarification, can you refer me what you guys, are you saying the original document that you guys did?
Are you talking about the Akloahha, you said Oviedo?
I said Oviedo.
I know, but is there an Oviedo, or is it, I saw Akloahha?
No, the one that I'm referring was sent in the emails, that document that was sent in the email from Ms. Jones.
Right, that's, that's. Go ahead, do you want to say something?
So, yeah, yeah, that's my question, that was my question to you, and I think um, Commissioner Borm is who said it, so I just want to make sure which ones you're saying you're, you like.
Well, I, I like the, the main, I mean, the main one, because it, this pretty much is, we had the same, the thing we've been using. All along, the, the, the city, yeah, so it's nothing really, like, different. The, the, the first one here, I mean, it's, it's pretty much the same, yeah, it's the pretty much same thing we've been using for the most part, from what we had in the nation, right?
I would.
Mayor, go ahead, Commissioner. Oh, I'm sorry, let me make sure.
I'm referring to simplicity.
Oh, that's not here.
I, I didn't think he didn't print this one off.
But I, I have it, yeah, I have it, I have it, but, so. Ma'am, can I see that, I just did bring a hard copy, can I see that, so. Two things, I'm, I want to make sure I'm on the same page, because again. To, to Commissioner Jones' point, I'm the new commissioner here, and you guys have been doing this for a while. I consider this as two different things.
That's what I referred to.
Yes, this, what you've been using is the evaluation, which is not the goals.
Correct.
So when, I'm trying to understand what is the commission, the other commissioners are saying are the goals, because my. Goals I have are, if we can, goals, performance plan, so two things, that's why I'm asking the question, where are we landing? I'm good with the performance plan recommendation, that's all.
Let me see, I don't, I don't have the one that you have.
That's the last part of the packet.
Three pages.
Okay, okay.
But, in other words, I'm just completing goals.
That, what I had on, alluded to at the beginning, when I said, to be clear, because it was asked. To us, and we really didn't clearly state those, though we'll be in the same predicament again, without having the goals defined.
But they just, they do carry really.
Right, you've got to be able to rate the person too, and have measurable goals, as we said before, so you can have some goals, as we have, but you've got to have that rating tool as well that ties into it.
And I, I don't think, I think it does.
I, I, I'm agreeing with you, but I think we, yeah, we're all, I think we are kind of all semi-agreeing.
Well, we want to be clear, though.
One more time, please, go ahead, Commissioner Borm.
I just said, we just want to be, be clear on it, because again, we still have some questions as related, related to that, and again, I think um, what Commissioner. Davis mentioned a while back, about the three hundred and sixty-degree um, review, I think, you know, the other component to reviews is, you know, you, you, you review yourself. Your supervisor or manager reviews you, and you also have reviews from people you work closely with, um. Contractors or whoever, because in this role, you're gonna be dealing with a lot of people. Uh, from the public, as well as contractors and different things of that nature, so I think. If we can get a little bit of feedback from that additional component, that try, that, that, that'll give you a little bit more of a three hundred and sixty-degree um, review process, where you're getting it a little bit from. The supervisor, the person themselves, we rate themselves, and then we have people who also work closely with them, uh, that's just. A recommendation that I would like to add, and this one other component.
Commissioner Jones?
Just, this is a question, so the other candidates, we made them do a thirty, sixty, ninety-day plan, and uh, what was our intent with that? Um, was it to really see what they were going to produce, uh, is that something that we're gonna? Ask or require Ms. Cardy? What was the intent, I don't know, just asking, what was the intent, are we really trying to make that happen, Mayor?
I, I think the intent, yes, was to see the progress, see if there was room for improvement, or if there were goals we hadn't. Provided, and that we needed to kind of tweak this a bit, and make sure that we were moving forward in the way that the commission desired. Um, with, and this person it was as well, their growth, and so I think the intent again was to make sure we were following what's going on, we've been, this commission hasn't. Been good at overseeing the city manager, frankly, um, there hasn't been a Dallas done and such, and so I think it's, it's time to really start that, and I think we can all learn from it by doing in the. At the sixty, ninety, one eighty-day marks, go ahead, you were saying some of what you want, Commissioner Jones, I think, Commissioner Campbell, go ahead.
I'm. I, I, the question that Commissioner Jones asked with regards to the thirty, sixty, ninety days, I think that was. A component that we brought in to see the thought process of where somebody from the outside who was looking for the organization, to come into the organization, what they would do. Um, I think with Ms. Cardy, again, consideration being that she's already operated in the position, is a little bit different, and if we're asking her for the, her initial. Uh, thirty, sixty, ninety, if that's something that we're requesting, I would, I mean, I'm open to it, but I believe the work that she's done speaks for her. Uh, the safety component of City Hall, um, the, the morale of the departments, the going through grants, one by one. Um, until she's gone through all of them, identifying grants that we would have missed the ball on and lost funding for, and could have potentially been um. In some hot water, so if that's something that we're asking her to do, I would ask her to put a memoir, not a memoir, but put a. Something together of the work that she's already done, um, because again, we don't have time to slow down, we gotta go full force ahead.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes, so. Um, to Commissioner, Commissioner Campbell's point. If um, Ms. Cardy does accept the offer and becomes a permanent city manager. And whomever accepts it at that point, because. The candidates presented a hypothetical thirty, sixty, ninety, right, for as part of their interview as an exercise. Um, based on research or however they got that information, I still, I believe that. Whoever comes in as a city manager needs to provide a thirty, sixty, ninety-day plan, so. Um, and, and uh, assign and understand their goals, and like, to your point, if they want to add some goals to it, but we need to give goals. The other thing I want to say about the information that was previously used, is that I, I don't. I think there are some key pieces that are missing or not clearly spelled out. One thing Ms. Cardy has done, she has filled some gaps. And that's one of the reasons I moved forward with the recommendation, because we have a lot of work to do, and we've been spending a lot. On trying to get a city manager, we have to get somebody here, and we got work to do. To that point, there are some other pieces, because she was filling a gap that she's not even had an opportunity to work with and address. And those are things like economic development and growth, um, you know, um.
Positive planning.
Correct, um, collaboration and partnerships, just to the extent needed from a city manager, sustainability and environmental stewardship. Especially with our buildings and the age of things in Palatka, economic development and growth, so. That's um, one of the reasons I would like us to ensure that we are providing comprehensive goals that encompass every area of a project manager. And not to what we've been doing to fill gaps, but I'm looking for us to raise the bar for our city manager according to what that role should be doing in our city.
And I think we all, I mean, in, in these performance goals that were um, are in this back of the packet, it does say economic development growth, I mean, we can expound on these, we can. Modify them, but um, some of that is kind of outlined briefly, so if, again, it's up to this commission to determine. How they want to move forward, um, based on her experiences to date, and based on the, those things she has not been able to tackle to date, that are things that the city needs to have addressed.
May I offer a suggestion?
Go ahead.
For next steps, um, and, and make sure, our goal tonight, is it? To identify how we'll get these finalized, or are we finalizing these tonight, that's my first question, and then I'll give my statement for my recommendation.
Finalize it tonight, and again, put this to bed and move forward, we keep going over things over and over again, and I'd like to see some finality. So we can move forward, and we don't have to workshop this again, if possible.
Agreed, I just want to make sure we all understood what we're trying to accomplish here, so I've submitted mine, and I'm gonna, so, so, so my recommendation is that we, can we agree on. A format that we like, and then agree on the content for it, and maybe fill that in, is that what we need to do to end up with a document?
So, uh, you're talking about to fill out the evaluation tool with the content, or, I mean, so we have some goals, and we, goals and objectives here, are you talking about the actual evaluation tool and filling that out?
Talking about, but, I'm talking about identifying the goals. Which are separate and distinct, like what we want, the areas, and then the evaluation criteria. And we have the cities, but um, and ensuring that, first, I think we need to agree on the goals, and then make sure the evaluation criteria links to that. Now, from looking at this, I think all of these examples provide great evaluation areas that, to me. Coincide is just which ones we want, and which ones we don't specifically, or if we want to add or delete some, so that's why I'm making a suggestion to a tangible way forward.
Anybody else have any input on this, or how, again, to proceed and to move forward, do we want to go through these goals quickly and make sure we're good with all of them, or. Um, need to add any more, or, you know, add or delete, whatever, uh, we need to just move forward and get this done. So I personally think that this is a good layout, go ahead, Commissioner Jones.
I thought we just did that. I thought we just did that. We'll say we're all okay with it.
Yeah, okay.
We, we just, yeah.
Yes, we just need to be clear.
We agree.
That's fine. And again, I think there was some out of the tools here, um, which was the tool the majority of us preferred, um, the second one that was in the packet, which was assisting council with its policy. The one that had the needs improvement meets, the rating was needs improvement meets expectations, exceeds expectations, or one to five rating.
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
So that we'll make sure we put the right thing in the document. The document that um, outlined the goals that were um, submitted by Commissioner Davis, is that what's been agreed upon utilizing? Okay, yes, so.
Okay, do we want to make a motion, please, to accept?
I, I thought that Campbell said, in addition to her, is that what you said? Yeah, hers added to what we have. No? Yeah, he did, well. Okay.
So, okay.
However, it is.
Okay.
I'm fine to proceed forward. I, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm fine. So we're clear on that.
Okay, I'm, I'm not clear. I'm sorry.
Okay, so the document that you just.
Starting page thirty-five of thirty-seven? Okay, these are your performance goals that you are going to adopt for the city manager?
I'll say yes.
Okay, yes. So do we, do you want a motion and a vote?
I, it would be my preference, yes.
Do we make a motion to accept?
The performance goal for the city manager of City Palatka has identified in our packet is page thirty-five of thirty-seven.
Thirty-five to thirty-six.
Thirty-five people.
We have, we have a motion to a second. A motion a second, all in favor? I, any opposition?
Evaluation.
Okay.
My recommendation, I stated that I like the city of Oviedo because it was very simple, which would allow us to explain. The only thing that I didn't want to get into as we look at the performance evaluation component is when we start the numbering. Uh, but sometimes the numbering ain't fucking quite confusing. Um, and when I say that, if we go back to Oklahoma Waho, and we look at their numbering system, it is one through five with regards to excellent, superior, that can be, you know, just when we get into that. But if you look at Oviedo, it, are they meeting the expectation? If you're not meeting the expectations, let's talk about why you're not meeting the expectation. If you are meeting the expectation, let's talk about how we can do better at getting you to exceed the expectation. So I believe that step and grade allows us to have actual dialogue that could be beneficial because it will allow the input of not only the commission, but it allows the explanation um, from our city manager to explain, okay, where they are um, with that particularly back at performance evaluation. So that's the only reason I considered uh, that uh, evaluation of that was presented to us by uh, with Oviedo.
So it's in pages twelve to eighteen, seventeen, I'm sorry, no, eighteen of our packet. So does anybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion? So make sure you want to make the motion.
I'm making the motion that we got the uh, evaluations form from the city of Oviedo with regard to our city manager evaluation process.
Uh, second.
And Oviedo is, you say?
It's, it starts on page um, eleven of our packet.
Eleven to eighteen.
Yeah, or maybe, yeah, yes.
Yeah.
It's actually twelve, I'm sorry, twelve, ten, twelve to eighteen. So we have a motion a second, any just further discussion? All in favor? I, any opposition?
And, and finally, can we talk about processes to make sure we're on the same page? So we know we have to do an evaluation, but like this form, each commissioner, I'm assuming, will complete this and provide comments? Okay. And we talked about three sixty.
Yeah.
So Miss, the city manager will complete and then, and then what about her direct reports?
That's what I was thinking that versus outside contractors. I was thinking the per, the people.
Correct, which are the directors, yes.
He or she, if she.
That's what I wanted to offer, yeah, that we get their feedback as well.
And we've got to provide that, that assessment too, would have to be provided to those individuals and to the city manager.
Okay, so for clarification, you want a three sixty, so the department heads, which are the city managers' direct reports, will also evaluate the city manager. Is that also at your thirty? Wh- what timeframe are you contemplating for that?
It would be, I guess, at the same intervals that we have so everything can be aligned. I mean, that, that's the only way you're going to be able to help make a, 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 a decision with everybody's input and information. Otherwise, if we, if the commission just did it, then if there is some other information that we would need to be able to make a decision, then we won't, we won't have information.
Understood. Uh, for clarification purposes, can I get those timeframes?
She said thirty sixty ninety.
Thirty sixty ninety days? And then annually?
What is?
We have an evaluation currently as at six months.
Six month.
And then.
And the annual.
The annual.
So I think we're talking six month. That was the plan that we requested the applicants submit. We're not talking about the. So it's, it's the six month and annual.
Okay, so the direct reports will evaluate the city manager in six months and then again, annually thereafter, it will be on an annual basis only.
Now, let me ask this question. Being that we have established it as the protocol of which we would like to follow, how do we ensure that those that she report directly to her? Um, are we making it mandatory? Or are we, how do we make sure that we get something to feast off of?
If we're saying this is going to be part of the evaluation process, it, it has to be.
Yes, it's to be modified.
Mandatory. Um, Ms. Jones?
What I don't want to happen is if we make it to where it's not mandatory, um, that we have one person that we're feasting off of for consideration, where we have several department heads. That's why I want to know, how do we take them into consideration um, with providing us information?
Uh, Ms. Jones, uh, Ms. West, do you have any thoughts on, on how we ensure that we have that response that we need?
Yeah, so it um, appears we're going to have to create the process of how you've already established and make that an outlining part of the process. So we'll have that process in place um, for you all that I'll put together. Um, from the selection process to the evaluation process, who will complete the, the um, evaluations? And then at what timeframe that they will complete them?
Okay.
So I will put that together and then I'll forward it out to all of you all for review and make sure if I'm missing anything or any steps in that, then you all can just give me feedback and then I'll um, change it or address it how it needs to be done.
I don't, and this is me, and I feel like some of the stuff that you just said, you're going back. I think for now, we focus on where we are moving forward so you don't become so bogged down with the process. Because hopefully, at this juncture, we don't have to worry about a process which gives you the opportunity to knock out the two or three things that are now and in the near future. And then you can circle back around to, once we get to a point, to do the actual process from the start to the finish.
I, I guess my question is, are you making it mandatory for her direct reports to provide that evaluation of the city manager for your consideration? Is that a mandatory requirement of department?
That's, that's why I asked.
I think that was the question, Ms. Jones. Can we make it mandatory? How can we actually make that happen? Or is it within our realm to do so? Go ahead.
We set policy.
I know, I know.
Well, no, no, we set policy.
Understand that. I want, I'm asking Ms. Jones. So I, yeah, I, I understand. I'm from the HR perspective, please.
So, yeah, I, we can um, make that a requirement for our department heads. Um, I would um, create um, amended random to state as such, as well as what they're actually completing. Um, and the reason and the timeframe as to when they need to have it completed um, for your review and then each of you would get that. And it's, so I'm clear, it's only for department heads that are direct reports to the city manager.
How productive would that really be? Because I guarantee you, there'll be no department head that give their boss a negative report or feedback. No, 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 I'm just, no, no, I'm not anticipating that, but that's kind of hard to do. Um.
Can I make a request, Ms. Jones? You know, three sixty degree feedback is not new and there are best practices. So perhaps maybe that's what you could do is take a look and understand. I, I've, whenever I've worked before, I've always had to do three sixties. I had to give my bosses feedback. I guess the question is, what is um, that? Well, yeah, it comes to us because it helps us evaluate the city manager thoroughly because we're not there every day in the trenches.
So would this be anonymous or would this be, it's given to just HR, then to us?
Yes, yes, yes. And we give the city manager her evaluation, not the direct feedback, that comes to us.
Incorporated in our, into our.
That's correct.
I get it.
That's the way. That comes to us, not to, she doesn't get her direct reports feedback.
We use that in our assessment.
Correct.
So in keeping true to the timeframe that Attorney West has requested, if we're doing it at our six month mark, when would we like that information to be submitted? Uh, our information as well as the department heads to be submitted to us for proper um, opportunities to look over.
And, and I, I think that's a HR's job, Ms., Ms. Jones.
Not a HR job, it's our job because if we want it to be submitted to us in a timely frame, because a ti- a lot of times, and it's no harm on our departments, we get stuff a week before, or if we want ample enough time to go through and really vet if we have any questions, it gives us the opportunity. So are we looking for at the five month mark to have that information provided? So at six months, we're on, that gives us a month to look over, meet with department heads, should we need clarity? Or are we looking for a two week timeframe?
Yeah, we wouldn't meet with the department heads, but I think the five month time is reasonable.
You, you have the ability, if you are, you have the ability to seek clarification because if someone meets or you need clarification on something that's documented, that opportunity should be provided for us to get clarification.
Okay, I think that five months, we said five months in terms of that information being provided to us.
I get it, but again, this is not corporate America.
It's not corporate America.
I'm not finished with my statement, Commissioner Davis. And I get best practices, but then again, if we are looking to have valued information and if there is something that is documented, that clarity needs to be provided, we should have the ability to get with whomever to make sure that as we're taking in consideration their perspective of their superior, that we are going to be evaluating ultimately. We want to make sure that that information is concise and we're not taking in consideration anything or putting it, putting it in our interpretation. Because if that's the case, why not have a meeting and have department heads to come and do that? So it gives us the opportunity for us to have, for, for it to keep them in a position to where there's a relationship between commissioners as well as the department head and the level of confidentiality versus us putting them in a position to say something different. That's the only reason I'm leaving it open for the opportunity. If you don't want to, you don't have to, but putting that out there because some can communicate better in person versus communicating in a written document.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis.
So, thank you. So what I'm offering, I think is even more relevant in a government area. Our jobs as commissioners is not to go to get feedback on their boss for us. Let me finish and, and I, and you may have to help me put some things in perspective and I'm going to tell you. I personally would never complete any evaluation on my boss if her boss was going to come to me and question me about it. The purpose of three sixty degree feedback is to give us information, one, to look for trends because you can have one disgruntled area who says something bad, but let's say everybody else says something good. I'm not saying you don't follow up. Our follow up is with the city manager. If we start going to city staff to follow up, especially on three sixty degree feedback, I think that could create a hostile environment. Or potentially us, a commissioners operating out of our, I'm just saying, this is my view on it. If we want our job, we have one employee, that is the city manager. And I think we have to manage it. However, since I am speaking from what I think and I am not an HR professional, I would like to ask if appropriate for Ms. Jones to find best practices for three sixty degree feedback, especially in a government or municipal environment. That way, we don't have to talk about what we think we can get the industry best practice and standard. I am very adamant about ensuring that our staff, and I'm not insinuating anyone else is not, but I want to make sure staff, city staff is protected and able to provide, provide feedback because the whole point is to provide a comprehensive evaluation. We don't know what the work is because again, we're, we're looking at the information provided in relation to what we're evaluating. There could be opportunity to talk to the city manager about some issues. But I, I'm just, unless it comes back that that's the best way to do it, and I've never heard of that in over thirty-five years of working, and yes, it has been in corporate environments. And I have worked with government entities where we had to provide and follow government regulations. I've never seen that. So I guess, uh, I'm sorry.
Okay, what, what, are, are you set? Are you all set?
Apparently.
Go ahead.
No. The issue that we're having is very much consistent. We, a recommendation is simply a recommendation. It's not to say we do it or to say we don't. If at this point you want to put a check mark on that to say, I'm willing to talk, put that and that'll solve all issues. But the going of, and, and we, I get it. But we're confusing staff even more with regards to the back and forth dialogue that we talk about best practices one way and then we talk about the industry standards in another way. Are we going to look at the industry standards or the best practices? Everything that is a best practice or a industry standard does not necessarily mean we have to adopt. I have sat on this diet since two thousand and fifteen. No process in which we've done prior is the same. We have to be willing to move with time. We have to be willing to be fluid. If it didn't work before, it's all a part of the consideration that is put forward. That's what I'm trying to say. But the more we talk, the more we confuse our staff, which puts us in a position to really not get anything accomplished.
Commissioner, are you set? Or do you want to say something?
You know, I'm basing this on one thing, obviously not experience. I'm basing it on the role and responsibility of a city commissioner, period. So that's my perspective. So that's my perspective. I hear you.
So, uh, to your point, Commissioner, um because we are under Florida sunshine law. All of these documents will be subject to public records requests. So Commissioner Campbell does have a valid point. If there's a direct report that would be more comfortable speaking to the commissioners rather than putting it in writing. Which would immediately be subject to public records requests and can go in the paper. That is an opportunity that is not a reality in the corporate world. Because that would be considered confidential information within the HR department and that is not the case. These will not be exempted public records.
I, may I, may I?
Okay, thank you, yes.
Well, if that's the case. Um, I agree with Commissioner Davis. Because if the if in fact, an employee. Make a statement, they must be willing to stand behind that statement. Because there's implications based upon a conversation and without it being in writing, don't mean anything. So I I will, I will, I will have tend to agree with you on that one.
Commissioner Borum?
Yes, I'm 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 very familiar with the three hundred and sixty degree feedbacks and feedback. I've worked in uh government and private industry as well as foundations. So uh I am very familiar with it and I totally agree with uh Commissioner Davis.
Any further discussion on this topic? I also agree. I worked in government for a long time, over over twenty-five years. And we did three sixties and it wasn't, we were not under the sunshine in Connecticut. It was a bit different, but um, yeah, I I just think.
But you know, even even being under the sunshine, if in the sunshine, you, i- if you make a statement. You need to be able to stand behind your statement. You should, we have protection built in to non-retaliation. So again, it's 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 the, it's the commission's role, job to make sure that those things are enforced. If if HR is not, so those things happen on the HR level and it happens on the commission level. So we shouldn't be afraid that if you want to say something, if you got statements that you need to make, make them. We're here to enforce the policies and there's non-retaliation, it means non-retaliation. I I don't know if um other um organizations, sometime they might not do it. But I think we have a responsibility to make sure that we carry those things out. And that's what some of our other employees um had um comments that they wanted to make, but they were afraid. And we did have people to actually come at the, at at the very end. Within the last six, eight months, came and made statements and they, they weren't retaliated again. So I think we need to make sure that we we enforce what we have on on the books.
Commissioners have done it before. On of clarification. My statement was not in any way, shape or form made. With regards to having a person not stand by what they put. My statement was giving me the ability to go to a department head. Should I desire to seek clarification from what was written? That's my statement. All of the other stuff is, was not what my intentions was. And if that was what everyone got from it, that was not it, giving me the opportunity. Because again, if I have one hire, but I'm leaning on the opportunity to give someone to speak on something. Regarding the hire that I have, I should be able to seek clarification in the event. Not saying that I'm going to do it, but in the event, I feel I need to seek further information or clarity. So that when I'm presenting information to my hire, that it is sound. And not interpretation from what I'm getting or what I've read. That's why the three sixty, I get it. I've said it, I've been a part of it. I'm just asking that it be considered, if we are making something mandatory. That it gives me the opportunity to speak to whatever department head for clarity. If you don't want that to happen, let them submit it anonymously. But if we're making something mandatory, I should have the ability to go to that person who's submitting. If we're just looking for information as a whole, don't make it mandatory.
Any further discussion on this particular item? Any further discussion beyond this item? Any commissioner comments?
So I have a comment with regards to the uh the timeframe that we've given Ms. Cardy to respond. Once we get a response, what is our next step? Is it to wait until a meeting to confirm or confer? Or what is the next steps from the commission standpoint or what's the recommendation?
So I I will be putting all of your terms uh into a contract for her consideration. Once again, I'll get that out the door first thing in the morning like I did with Mr. Jones. And I will give her a deadline of Wednesday, close of business uh to respond. If she accepts the offer, you have a binding contract um for her to act as city manager effective immediately.
Let me ask this question. Will she be traveling to the conference this week?
Yes.
May we take that into consideration?
In terms of her op- timeframe to respond?
Yes.
How does that impact that?
When does she leave? That's, I guess that's what I'm asking, because I know some of us are leaving Wednesday.
She leaves Wednesday and comes back Friday. Um and I think there's two of you that leave tomorrow.
Does that travel time impede on her being able to sit down and go through the contract? That's what I'm, I want to be fair.
Um the the fair, the fairness, I think, Commissioner, would be the same time that we gave everybody else. She, once she's notified, then that timeframe is going to be.
So that means she's going to be notified tonight like Mr. Redman was.
Correct.
And the contract went out.
At eight fourteen AM?
No, that's fine, but she's going to be notified prior to that tonight, as Ms. Jones did in our meeting. So she's not just being dropped dead with the email. So she's been getting a phone call saying tonight stating that she has. Been considered for the permanent city manager.
Being offered that position, yes.
That's what I'm trying to make sure that that process is clear.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any further comments?
Commissioner comments?
You may.
Um, I have a comment. And it's a reference to sunshine, sunshine law and the sunshine uh public records request. And uh.
Public records request in sunshine. Uh been informed that a public records request have been, again, have been um. Requested by staff to look into some commissioners having conversation or what have you. And I want to go on the record stating that uh everybody up here on this dais. I have history with and I know, with the exception of the mayor, I've known her since uh being elected. Uh however, I. I have conversations that have absolutely nothing to do with the city from time to time. And in a small community as Palaca and 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 other regions. You know, you're going to talk to commissioners at functions and maybe ask how the family doing. Maybe ask about uh events that again, has absolutely nothing to do. With city or city business. So people are going to see you and I, I am, one, will not shy away. From a conversation on how you doing from anyone. Uh that's, that's some somewhat unrealistic. Um so if people want to continue to ask, and that's their right to do for public records, it's great. But I think they'll, you know, wasting taxpayers' dollars and having people uh question about conversations. Uh unless they have some facts or something to back up uh their reason for suspicion. And I think with the dynamics and some of the dialogue that's up here. You could tell that there's no prior conversations about what we're talking about. That's almost obvious. But you know, I just want to to make it clear that. We as citizens of this community, lifelong residents, most of us. We're going to have conversations and we're going to see each other in restaurants. And it's very, I think, it's. It's hypocritical to see your colleague and you can't go over and say hello to them and their family. And even after a meeting, because we get up here and we have discussion and sometimes it gets a little uh. Exciting and passionate, yeah. And so, and and maybe times where it like, uh, it's nothing wrong with saying. Hey, I'm sorry for my tone. And I have went to commissioners and said that, the mayor a- as well, about maybe my tone up here on this dais. And it's nothing personal. When I leave here, it's nothing personal. Um we feel strongly about our positions and we feel strongly about representing Palaca. So I wanted to go on record saying that we don't have to be on pins and needles. When you see someone in public that you can't speak to them or you can't have a conver- a civil conversation. And I think it's more healthier to do that than to avoid one another, because it seems like we're adversarial at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional commissioner comments?
I concur, I concur with uh Commissioner Jones. I've been, I've been on commission now on my eleventh year. And again, um, nobody can ever say that I ever. Uh violated a sunshine as it relates to anything. Now, there's been a lot of public record requests and different things of that of that nature. Don't yield anything, at least in my camp. Um but again, I I I, you 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 gotta have the ethics. It's it's all within your morals and values. And there's, nobody can say that I ever viol- violated the sunshine law. If if you, if I'm, if I see a commissioner, if I see somebody, I'm not going to avoid them like the plague. Because I know where my morals and values lie. And so uh again, and I concur completely with uh Commissioner Jones in that regard. Now, we're not going to be hanging out every day and we see each other, we're going to talk, we're going to, I mean, I talk to all the commissioners and the mayor. When I see him, I'm not going to avoid people and I know when we got things coming up for a vote. I know how to make sure that there's no improprietary thing going on. But again, I thank you for bringing that up because we, you know, we, we have a community here who like to kind of throw things around as it relates to sunshine. But I live in a glass house and I don't mind people knowing any and everything that I do.
Any other comments? Do we have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, my meeting adjourned.